I'll call the planning board meeting. We're starting to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, today is March 26th, right?
Yes.
As we're with the planning board meeting, we are being recorded for public access YouTube and whatever, whatnot. Attendance tonight is myself, Adam Somerville, chairman.
Lane Burdron, co-chair.
Brandon Griffin Clark.
Paul Kim from Lenoir.
Lee Andrew from Muggs.
All right. First thing on our agenda tonight, we'll go right to the MBTA overlay district. What was Judy's response? Do we have anything to say or?
Yes, so the issue that she had brought up was in regards to the frontage requirement in the bylaw. Because anything under what was listed as the, what was 100 feet, anything that had less frontage that would automatically be disqualified, which would make us not an adherence to what they were asking from the state. So I had posed the three questions to her that had been asked about if we could remove that parcel that only has the 17 point whatever feet. She said that at this stage in the game, it is not really possible as it would change all of the the numbers and the
Ratios.
The ratios and everything. She said you can definitely, you know, reduce it to the smallest lot size that, you know, frontage size that you have and that she can make those changes. It's not a problem. Or she said there has been some towns that have just dropped it to zero to be able to adhere to all the lot sizes. She is on vacation right now, but if there are questions from the board at this time, I can forward them along to her and she said she'll get, she does have email service, but it won't be immediate that the responses.
What was the smallest lot size for frontage? Do you remember?
15 feet.
17.5 feet. The total lots, square footage on the lot is about 460 square feet.
Is that the barber shop lot?
That's just the barber shop.
So if it made it 15 feet, it would cover all the lots proposed?
I thought 15 was wide enough.
Say that again?
No, one of
15 feet too.
One of the, that was just the numbers we were saying. If we reduced it, if we took that, that parcel out that has the 17.5 frontage, we could do 30 feet and still get everything. Or if we left that in, we could just use 15 as like a round number and that would cover everything.
Now, the thing is, I feel that we should not go to zero.
No.
Because if you go to zero, there's no, they have to have some type of an access. In a minimum of 15 feet. It's not really a driveway.
Yeah.
But at least they have access to a public way.
How many lots would we lose if we cut it? If you have, what are we talking about? Just briefly.
Well, 100 feet, your, the biggest lot you would lose is the one that you come in was industrial way off.
You want the end of industrial line?
Yeah. And you come into Palm Street, the other way. That one's probably got like a 30 foot on the yak. So you'll lose that big, big block. That would make a big difference.
Yeah.
This 460 square foot block wouldn't make any difference on your
So this would only impact what's going to be over the overlay?
Yes.
Just the overlay district. It's part of the overlay district.
I'm not comfortable going, Sarah, leave that.
John?
I'm not comfortable going anywhere close to zero because if it's say 30 feet, people are going to start chopping up those existing lots and only have, having 30 feet of frontage. I have no idea what the impact of that would be, but I bet it wouldn't be good.
Yeah.
I could see, I did notice, so we are 100 feet for this proposed district. Now, the, the business and industrial districts are 90 feet. So I could see maybe at 90 feet conform to that, but I wouldn't go any lower than that. I'd want, I mean, I guess Melissa, I, do we know
If we
what the numbers were to this point? I mean, I don't understand why we can't just get rid of that one lot.
That would lose all the ratios and all the things that we need.
Well, it sounds like they don't, Judy doesn't want to do the computation again.
It's more around the law.
1%. So, okay. Can we disqualify a lot ourselves?
We can probably disregard, but you bring up another point. And Melissa, did you send that email?
She had already left for vacation at that point. So I was, I was holding it for tonight. Yeah, so I was holding it for tonight to be able to send them all together.
It doesn't make sense to me as a matter of policy. Let's say we have a lot that's, doesn't meet the requirements. Why cut that lot out and eliminate the possibility that somebody could buy that lot and combine it with adjacent lots and build housing? I mean, it, it, you're making it ineligible for multifamily housing. You could cut it up. As long as we're over the floor that we have to be, if we have ineligible lots, so what? As long as you don't count them in your numbers.
The way I read her email last time was if we cut out all the lots under 100 feet, we would not meet our quota.
Well, then
And that was the whole purpose of bringing this up. And I, my question was, well, that I have is for you. If we had, if we did put it zero feet, couldn't it, would it sign the approval? Could you change that on the spot with that? I don't know. That's why I was asking.
I don't see stuff.
Yeah.
That is just really dangerous.
Yeah.
So also what Judy had said from my understanding was that, so if we have this overlay district because it's by right, anything within that district that doesn't qualify pretty much automatically disqualifies the whole district because it's supposed to be by right.
No sense.
That's the one piece property.
And I pointed out in, what I gave Melissa was, I watched MM, Mass Municipal Association had a webinar on this. I don't know if it was public services, you folks, or some of the municipal lawyers association. I watched, watched it with the person at EO HLC that's in charge of the program, the person at the AG's office who reviews zoning bylaws after they're approved, and a couple of lawyers. And they, they supplied attachments, attachments to some of the letters that EO HLC has written for the towns when it's, they reviewed bylaws that have been adopted. And a big problem has come up in other towns is towns that have floodplain zoning or weapons zoning and require a special permit. That if this overlay district is in a floodplain zoning district, you're requiring a special permit, so it isn't really by right. And, but what the state has done in those cases is just say, okay, we won't count the lots that are in the floodplain zoning to which meeting your requirement. And as long as the town still had enough land outside of the floodplain zoning, it was okay. So I don't, I don't get what she
So maybe the issue is that we don't have enough land in our district.
And if so, you know, tell us how much more we need between the barber shop lot and the industrial way lot. How much are we under? And then we could, cause then we could throw in Commonwealth lots or
So, and I'm not sure if she, when, cause she had said at this point in the game when I talked to her. So I don't know if she's referring to our timeline.
That's what I was
If this, because
Doesn't sound right.
If we filed the
Yes, we are, we're having a public hearing in less than we're supposed to be having a public hearing in less than two weeks. And then the date for the warrant, I don't know if we will have
But you can change the bylaw after the public hearing. You know, that's why you have a public hearing. So I, that doesn't, this doesn't make sense to me.
I agree.
Yeah, I can definitely reach back out to her again. But again, I don't know how it affects the timeline.
Then what do we got there? That's the key thing.
I have, if you would like to
Are we 150% sure that that's the smallest?
I'm 99.9% sure it's the smallest.
It's been down from there. Look at these, these are the this is the map of the district. I don't know if you guys will look at it to see if there's potential areas that you want to set up.
I also need, what I gave Melissa to send to Judy was, again, assume for a moment that we're, that we have enough land if you don't count these non-compliant lots. That like the lot in industrial way, well, if you extended industrial way further into that lot, you could create frontage. You know, so I wouldn't want to see that lot excluded from the district because it still has the potential to ultimately be usable.
But then the lot next to it, which is T and K.
Yeah.
It's kind of a, for better or the, triangle onto the circle.
Yeah.
That circle is less than 100 feet.
Okay. Yeah.
You need to come up on this one.
So where does it stop on South Ave? Where does our overlay stop on South Ave?
By the Boulevard that says Coldbrook Boulevard?
They only go to this far as Coldbrook.
Yeah. And then down to Pleasant.
That goes down to Pleasant?
It takes from the old fire station in the
What if we went to the first street? I think it's Brigham on the right-hand side beyond the fire station. Once you cross 27. Or even, even staying on the same side, you've got the old there's a couple, there's an old used car dealership or something on the left-hand side. And there's the place with the, I think it's a nail place now. It used to be Jordan Insurance.
Yeah.
What if you just went a little that way? Cause there's some commercial there that could convert into housing easily enough.
But the thing is, if I take 400 square foot lot out of this whole thing, I don't think it's going to make a, a small difference.
Without having the numbers from her. What's the acreage that we have? What's the number even that's
That's very important to have her have tonight, at least on Zoom, but she's on vacation.
So Cause you're going to want that for the public meeting anyway, because people are going to ask.
She is, she is coming to the public hearing to present.
Now, the other thing, the way that this is shown, that lot at the end of Palm Street industrial Ave shows Palm Street going into the lot. So therefore it would be cut. But if it's just at the end of where Palm Street comes in, I don't know what the right of way on Palm Street is.
Yeah, it was hard, you know, when I looked at the assesses map just on the town website, it was, or I guess maybe I looked at the GIS map.
The GIS?
It's, it's hard to know whether that's really a public way, the whole way, or whether it's just a driveway.
Well, my feeling is it should not be less than 100 feet. And if we have to prolong this, we have the fall for a special town meeting. I think we don't get forced into doing something we're going to regret.
Now, if you make it less than 50 feet on Essex Street, you just have to go over the railroad track. There's a storage place on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
That's 50 feet.
It's only 50.
It's only 50. That's why I, I don't think we should be zero. But, you know.
50 feet would cover most of them.
That's, you know.
But we need to know, I, I want to hear it from Barrett that we can't just, we can't disqualify something off the cuff. So it doesn't get caught and then the AG office, the AG's office says A, B, C, or D. But if we can't do that, then I need to hear
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Numbers in my head to make it make sense.
Do we, do we have to have the hearing within so many days of when we're proposing to put it on the warrant?
Um, the, the town needs everything by, I want to say it's April 11th to be on the warrant.
Let me ask it a different way. Can we have the hearing on the 8th?
Yeah.
But not put it on the warrant until September?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, no, we'd have to, it has to be within 65 days. Yes, of the town. Yes.
But you could have enough
Yeah, we would just have enough. Yeah, we just have enough to have another one.
So would it make sense to have the hearing? But before we have the hearing, I don't know what time, what a time is of hearing. I know you want
6 o'clock on the 8th, on Monday, April 8th.
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
Two Mondays.
Two Mondays.
Two weeks.
Next Monday is only the 1st.
And unfortunately, they don't want to have it on
When is, what's the name of that?
Hold on, let me look in my email.
What's her first name?
Judy. Judy. Give me one moment to look at my email and I can let you know.
And now I'm looking at this map. And I was of the impression that we were going all the way up to Lyons Lane that's taken to residential property. I thought we were going to start with the industrial stuff just before that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I don't want to take somebody's, if we're not taking anybody's homes, why have been on these two?
Yeah, it's got all the lots sort of online, so I mean, yeah.
If you, just give me one second. I'm trying to look up Judy's thing and then I can look up the last map that you guys sent me from the meeting that I wasn't here that you guys had.
We can always take the
Uh, no.
They just moved in. They don't have a lot.
They got, they got a house. Yeah, they died.
They're very popular.
You don't have to worry about that. How many people are going to be there?
Pretty good.
Don't do this stat.
Sorry, the wifi just doesn't work very good here. So I'm trying to get the
That's fine. What I'm thinking is if we could meet with Judy either before or after the hearing.
It could be part of the public hearing. The planning board has the right to ask questions at the public hearing. Or you could have somebody play it in the audience desk and
Yeah, try not to get put there on the spot though.
That's what she gets paid for.
Is the, my, my question is, my only question is it not, is there a point? I, I'm going to say it and it's going to come out, not the way I want it to sound.
Say however you want.
Is, is there a point to have the public hearing that day? If it's
If it does
If we are just going to then again, have another public hearing because we, you know that you're going to change.
We don't know that yet because depending on
Well, you know, it's going to, well, I guess not. I was going to say, cause it, if, if you're thinking that the 100 feet is going to push out so many that you have to change the map and all that anyway.
Well, it may not have to be 100 feet, but my, my, I'm with Brandon in the sense that I would like her in the room with us. So we were sure we were getting, not that any of the communication hasn't been cleared. It has been, but it doesn't make sense that one piece of property, the size of that barber shop being taken out is throwing a whole thing off.
I don't think it was just that one though. It was the other one too, that
It's, cause anything under 100 feet frontage would have to be taken.
What was the other?
That was what, 30 feet, right, Bob?
Yeah, I think the one between Palm Street and Dutcher Way, the old building, the old big manufacturing building.
Place that needs to be, yeah.
Good times were taken down already.
That's the problem. That's the one that we'll lose, the biggest one.
That would be the biggest.
And now if I throw the numbers off.
But there are some on Essex Street that are only 50 feet.
If you, if you hold off on this to the fall, it still has to all be done before December 31st, right?
Well, that's fine.
You have a choice on that. So you're going to have to have it in that section that
You know, also, you know, holding it off to the fall would also allow you to submit it to the state for review, you know, which we, which a lot of towns are doing, but we haven't done because, and the state is taking 90 days to review these things. So there definitely isn't time to do it. But if, if we put it off to, you know, as much as I wanted to see this get done.
Yeah.
I hate to see it's passive and then that the state
Yeah.
Instead of
That's more
That's nonsense. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So Melissa, she
This is what I would go through with what happened, what's going on.
Right, that is it.
And do a public hearing. Once it's posted, don't we have to have it?
No, we just canceled.
You just cancel it.
You can cancel it. So maybe we should cancel it.
Or you can have a public hearing, you can
But we'll have to have another one.
Yeah, but that's mine.
Yeah, I mean, this, you know, you have a public hearing, you might get some input that's
Different than what we think.
Yeah.
Well, then I propose that we meet with Judy whenever appropriate for her and us. And have a really good session that we figure out just what can we and can't do without going to zero footage. Cause I don't
When was she gone back on vacation?
I'm trying to find an email from her.
We could always meet next Tuesday.
I don't know if she
I think we should kind of look at this from two different paths and take room both.
Yeah.
I, I don't
I don't split well.
I don't see harm in holding a public hearing for where it stands now. And if timeline gets thrown off, if there's a wrench, if we can't pick a number, if we can't even look into just seeing if we really can't disqualify a sandbox.
I just didn't know when she posted it. Judy canceled it.
She returns from vacation on, like the, the hearing day is her first day back from vacation. Yes.
Yeah. Well, maybe we could just have the hearing. Maybe she can stay after the hearing and talk to us.
Um, I know she has another meeting that she's doing that same night. So I think she was actually going to be using her computer to do Zoom from here to do it. So I don't
Excuse her from the hearing.
Yeah.
And ask her to come, is the Tuesday, the second Tuesday it is?
Yeah.
Ask her to come on the night.
Yep, that's fine. I won't be here, but that's fine. So the only
We have the public hearing, there's going to be a lot of questions.
So My only que, my only
That's why we should have
Idea is that it, whether regardless, whatever, you decide to do whatever, that we probably just want, if it's going to be something that we think is going to be different than the timeline we had already proposed, that we might want to at least let the powers that be know that
Justin, now we can share it with whoever.
Just that, so
Yeah, we're not trying to hide it.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying so they know ahead of time that like
Well, they don't have to finalize the warrant on the 11th.
Yes, yeah.
She could tell us on the night of the hearing that 50 feet would make, include everything.
But she don't
But that will, she won't be able to redo it all before
But the thing is, somebody's got to take a look at this map and determine what the smallest line is.
Figure that would be done by now.
But that's not like, I know what it is, but it's not
Well, that's, she, that's, it's not from what she had said that that is not like, they won't go through and tell us what the smallest lot is and all that.
So who could verify it?
That would be The planning boards would have to go through the lots and
Did you, I mean, there's this compliance model that's on the state website, which I assume is what she's using to generate the numbers. Did you, did you go on that or did you just
I go to the one on the website down in the left-hand, right-hand
I haven't gone on the state website, is that
No, no, the town website.
Oh, oh, okay.
The GSI.
Okay.
And sometimes it comes up and it gives the
Frontage.
The frontage. But there's a couple of them that it doesn't, and I tried to interpret it and
You're guessing.
No, what she's using, I'm sure, is the state has provided this computer model. You plug in everything and it tells you how many units you've got and how many acres you have. So it's called, they call it the compliance model.
Right.
And actually anybody could use it, except I'm sure if I tried, I couldn't, who would not use it?
So what is the frontage on Pine Street? On, on that property?
It's the width of the road. I don't know what the width of the road is, the right of way. I know
Of Palm Street.
Of Palm Street.
Cause it doesn't have any frontage on industrial ways?
It does, but it's on the corner out of the lot.
On the cul-de-sac.
And I'm saying it's about between 25 and 21 feet.
So that's, that's the problem with that.
Yeah. It has to take a lot.
That's a big lot.
Again, if we knew that we were five acres under, at that point, you could look at the Commonwealth lot, lot properties, you know, cause you've got plenty that's can, only half, only half has to be completed. So you got that. At that point, you could throw in some of the other developed lots in town, like the ones in Bedford Street that are already developed and throw them in.
You can go back this way and just add it this way.
Oh, you're throwing the DBW in there?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I, I, again, I don't know if public property is excluded.
It's a I think it was because we wanted to do the school.
No, the school, so, but the school was specific use on the deed.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I just bring up what I did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's
I definitely think
Five or 10 acres, you could come up with that.
Right.
I definitely think there's probably options. I think just with, I'm, I'm assuming, this is just my assumption, was that the timeline given was probably part of the restriction because of the back and forth that would take. I don't think it's not doable. I think it just takes time.
I think that we need the time to figure this out. So does it make sense to have the hearing if we can't have her? She can be here for the hearing, but we're not going to be, we don't know what we're presenting yet at the hearing. We could have her come on the night and answer our questions and excuse it from the hearing and excuse everybody from the hearing, change it. Because I think having a hearing when we don't know what we're doing doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah.
We can't answer the questions because we don't know yet.
Would, just again, just ideas. If we have her still come on the 8th, but cancel the public hearing and just schedule a meeting.
No, but the problem is if you don't have the public hearing on the 8th,
Yeah.
You'll prevent it, planning boards will prevent that from going on the town board.
Yeah, it won't be on this
Well, if, no, I know, but if it's not completed, it won't be on because they have to have it by the 11th. So if it's not completed on the 8th, it's not going to be on
Put it on the warrant by the 11th.
Yeah. But if we don't send it to them, then they can't put it back on
Do you have a meeting on the 8th instead of the 9th?
I was just saying since she's already coming that day, that if, I didn't know if you wanted to keep her coming that day.
So have a planning meeting on the 8th instead of the 9th, but not have a hearing.
I was, that was just an idea. I'm just throwing out scenarios.
I just want to understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Maybe it's easier for her to come on the 9th.
Well, she's already, she already put us in, she's in our, we're in her schedule for the like she's already I don't know what her other
And any adjustments, just put amendment in the town meeting?
You don't want an amendment on the town meeting.
Yeah. I'm at, that's why I'm asking legally, yes, but practically, you know.
Even if you state amendment, there's just this one little piece to highlight.
No.
Okay?
Yeah.
I'm just asking, that's why I'm asking.
I'm at a town meeting, you have my
I have.
So going back to Melissa's
Transgender boosters.
Well, first of all, we can hearing because we all know what we're doing. But we know that Judy's scheduled to come see us anyway. So why don't we move our planning board meeting of the 9th to the 8th? Cause we got time to post and everything. And have it be to have her answer all of our questions to see what we can configure. And in the meantime, you tell Justin that there's too many concerns with doing away with the hearing, we're having her back. He's welcome. It's not on a Tuesday, so he should be able to come. That's my opinion.
But, and that means not putting it on this town meeting board.
Exactly.[1720.11]
Yeah.
This would just be a meeting to answer questions and send her on her way with what we come up with that night, or with her guidance. And no, we're not gonna do the 11th, and we're not gonna do this mag, because we just can't. We don't know, we, we can't fit it into the time.
Yeah, and that, that's also, you know, to send it to the state for review, so...
Yeah, I think that's a really important point, because they can come back and say the whole thing's wrong even if we think it's right.
Right.
Yeah.
And we get it on the September meeting, because there'll be a special town meeting probably anyway.
Yeah, that's the...
Well, yeah.
It's all...
That is the, that's the application for it.
Don't go. Should we take a vote on this?
Do we have motion?
I'm not motioning.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Is, do you have...
I think we should have the public hearing.
Okay.
Regardless.
I, I agree with that.
And then you take input from the public hearing, then you may not make a decision. At least you have a public hearing.
Could Judy come here at 5:00? And we'd be here an hour early and just ask a few questions?
It's bigger than a few questions, so...
Well, we, right now, we've got a motion on the floor to post one of the...
I would throw my motion, but I won't withdraw that we're gonna be able to get it onto the warrant.
Well, that's, that's fine. You can, that's fine, but I think you should have a public hearing.
And just get their input anyway.
Yep.
So we're gonna say at the public hearing that we're interested in your input because we're not prepared to tell them any answers to anything.
At this moment, our opinion is changing, but we're just...
Yeah, I mean, you can say this is a tentative map and it may need some tinkering with, what if people...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that I'm, I'm giving her the correct information, because obviously, like I said, she's not coming back until, you know, that'll be her first day back, so I don't want her to be blindsided, so, um, it, do you still want her, because she was planning to come and do a full presentation on... Do you want her to still come in and do the same presentation on, I just wanna make sure I, you know, communicate effectively.
I don't think she can do a presentation, because we haven't fixed the problem.
I, it should be an abbreviated presentation, no more than 15 minutes. And I think she can cover a lot, 15 minutes, and then you ask people for their input. And then you start asking questions, then she can answer the questions.
Yeah, you gotta kind of read, see who shows up.
Read the room.
Read the room.
Yeah, that's exactly it. Read the room.
But the presentation should be any more than 15 minutes, because it's pretty straightforward relative to district, what's implied by the state.
So that you just get, kind of like the one that she did for us at the very beginning when she came in? Just kind of like, this is what is required, this is how you do that?
Yeah, 15.
Okay, okay.
And it, it would be the same type of presentation you wanna do at a town meeting, because you don't wanna drag it out.
Right, yeah.
But she also needs to understand that we're not ready to go forward, that we're gonna have questions for her.
At the public hearing.
Well, that's where I, I think we could be putting her on the spot, because I think she...
I agree with that, but I do agree that we should still hold it.
Yeah, I'm fine with going to the public meeting, but I don't think we're gonna have any, I don't think we can honestly tell what the answers, because we don't know yet.
No, it's just, to me...
Informative.
A person that's in her position, getting ready for town meetings in the spring, going on vacation. I'm sorry.
People, people have lives.
No, I understand people have lives, but there are certain times in the year that I don't take vacations because I know there's a...
Yep. Well, she told me she's on vacation. I don't know what she does with her personal time, you know?
Yeah, and that's, we, we discussed that.
I mean, we're, we're not technically under any obligation to directly answer questions. We can just take the comments...
Right.
And say, okay, we don't need to...
Well, that goes back to what John said, is we're telling them that this is a...
Read the room. Now, the other question is, what about the voting on the, uh, reduced housing, lower income housing? You need a 75, 66 and 2/3s or...
Okay, so that too doesn't make sense to me, because, again, sitting through this webinar, there was lots of discussion about the, the only concern the state had about the affordable requirement was, the state has said you can go, you can require up to 10%. And their only concern is if you require like 20%, you gotta submit this feasibility analysis to the state, because 20% might mean nothing at still, you know, so the state's concerned about that. But at no point in this webinar did they say, if you include affordability requirement, you're gonna need a 2/3s.
But Judy came back and said...
That that's what some town councils have said. So our, our town council is still reviewing, um, there was an, an issue with that as well there, um, it's probably gonna be, the review from them is probably gonna be completed, they said, by April 9th. So, again, it just, unfortunately, nothing's really lining up the way...
Town council, town council should, so there's, again, a person in the AG's office, this is one who's been doing this for 20 years and, you know, not somebody new. It's a person who, when you pass zoning by law or general by law, they have to approve it. But she's, you know, giving prior comments to people on, you know, that kind of question is not something that the executive office of the local communities knows anything about. That's something that, I don't say they don't know anything about, but that's, that would be the attorney general's call when they review the bylaw and they say, oop, your vote's invalid because it wasn't 2/3.
That's something...
The town council...
Phone call.
Exactly. A phone call could answer that question, because that's, that's, otherwise that'll come up in 100 times.
Yeah.
And, I mean, as it stands, from what I understand, I, I would tend to agree with John, because we're not deviating from the acceptable. We're not asking for extra.
No.
Yeah, I just think if there was an issue, it would've come up in this webinar. They wouldn't want, these people would, a couple of them were town councils, other, other law firms, and they would've said, oh, watch out for this stuff. It didn't come up, so...
And she made, she made it clear that she was happy with our attitude of the whole thing, that we were doing the right thing.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I mean, I'll go along with him and hope that hearing, but like, that tells me it's not good, because we don't have any facts to tell.
There's too many unanswered questions to go ahead and spread things or... But I, I, I agree there's value to have a public hearing, you know, you get a big blowback, something, you might as well find out now.
Well, somebody, nobody might show up here.
And that, that happens, that's very revealing too.
Probably good if people don't show up.
It's a good sign, yeah.
But I guess what we should tell Judy is, we're gonna have a public hearing, we have a lot of questions for her.
Yep.
Um, we can't answer the questions in the public hearing, because we really don't have a plan, because we're not comfortable with the footage suggestion of zero.
But as, I mean, as, as far as we are currently concerned, that is the only hangup that we can
That we know.
wrap our hands around and say, okay, we know this is a problem.
Right.
We don't need to present anything more than what we have.
To the, to the public.
That's my take.
Yeah.
I think she's, I'm full breaking valid points, and I agree with...
Yeah. I think that her presentation, my pict- my picture of a public hearing is people have heard all this stuff, they've heard about Milton, they've heard about other places, they're gonna come in and want to hear from a professional, who she is, what is it exactly that should happen? She's gonna give that.
Yep.
We can say we have a preliminary idea of what we're doing, but more work needs to be done.
Yep.
And then see how it goes. Read the room, how, you know, they...
Yep, and then...
Are they knowledgeable enough to ask the questions that will help us make a further decision? Are they just coming to get knowledge? What, what is the read?
And then from there, do you want me to see if we can coordinate her coming to
Well, to Bob.
Planning Board meeting?
He's feeling like we can ask her the questions at the meeting, so... Maybe we won't need the second meeting, but we clearly need to tell Justin and the powers-to-be that we're not gonna make the 11th deadline for the warrant. Do we all agree on that?
It seems very unlikely, yeah.
Because I like John's idea about sending it to the state and letting them chew on it before we get it on a warrant somewhere.
Because a state reject, we can then take it back and correct it.
Still have time to fix it.
Before the...
Yeah, I mean, you guys, you're still on track to get this finalized by early May probably, you know, if you can get Judy and tinkle with the numbers. And that's still four months before the fall.
Yeah, so she sends it on...
So that will get the state part of it.
Then we'd be real confident at the fall meeting, which might not be till October or November, I don't know when, but we could still make the December deadline.
Yeah.
It's too bad, but we have to make progress.
Because, because even last week, we kind of had the take that, you know, we can just hit a lower and make it, it would just be a strike curve, essentially, that's what I'm reading, but, um, not knowing, and it kind of sounds like she backtracked a little bit in a weird way.
Well, that's why I'm not comfortable that...
Am I wrong in saying that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just not comfortable that we're, we're totally digesting what she is saying to us as far as, it's odd to me that she would suggest a zero frontage. For the very reason that John brought up, is you're setting yourself up for who knows what.
Who knows what? I don't know what you're setting yourself up for. That, that makes you nervous.
But the subdividing thing is a big, big point.
But isn't it, you know, some place in life, thing that you can't subdivide?
No. No. If you add a parcel that's, you know, has 60 feet of frontage and you say it only leaves 30?
No, no, but I'm saying, there's, there's something in the document itself that once this is passed, 36 months, you can't divide or subdivide or some...
There's, there's something.
The lots are locked in. That's what I, that was my understanding, is that the lots are locked in.
In the butt, we have...
Or pose a bylaw, yeah.
Yeah, it, it was in there, and I don't, I mean, I don't know if it's been...
No, it hasn't been really touched, but, um, it was, yeah, it was, uh, 36 months, the, the, uh, the, I don't know.
The lots cannot be subdivided and to avoid compliance.
Right, to avoid compliance.
To get below the 10 units on an affordable unit.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah, you're okay, yeah.
But to do it to build more, build more units, sure.
Thank you, John.
Yes, 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 yes.
I'm only a Philadelphia lawyer, not a lawyer.
So that helped you, Melissa?
Yep, so I'll just let her know that you guys may have questions at...
Tell them we got them.
Well, that you have questions for at the public hearing, um, and that, you know, we may need to schedule another time for her to come back after that, but it depends on how the public hearing goes.
Make her understand that our biggest question is, or our biggest point is, we're not comfortable
Yes, yeah.
with zero footage.
That your goal is to keep it at 100, correct?
I don't think a 100 will happen.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think 100 is gonna happen.
But you, without, without having the numbers in front of you.
You don't know. I think we should look at 50 feet.
I think, you know, 50 would...
That way, you can, you can do anything with 50 feet.
Yeah, but also, so we would need her to go back, put the 50 foot in, and then let us know all of the...
It's, it's just a number that we can't...
Acreage, unit number, you know, all the, all the stuff.
You want it to be wide enough, you can put the equivalent road in there as a driveway into the property.
Yeah.
I think, I think expecting 100 is too much.
Yeah, 50, thank you.
Yeah, we should get a road, two-lane road right here, 40 foot right away.
Exactly, so 50 seems right.
Can it go 50 or go 0?
Yeah, or nothing.
It's a weird thing to infer, and why...
I'm, I'm, I'm just assuming that maybe some places are just changing it to get it done and...
Yeah, and that's what I don't want to do.
No, yeah, exactly.
I want it to be workable.
Yeah.
Because
Yeah.
we're all gonna have to live with it.
Exactly, it's like...
Trying to look out for your community and...
Sell a pig in a poach of the town and finally agree.
The good of the community, not just getting it done.
Yeah, and, and I, idealistically, we're protect, protecting the community, and that's all of our jobs. Okay, I think we're all on the same page.
Okay, I will...
It's all, it's all settled here. Let's go ahead and have the public hearing.
I'll, um, draft an email to her tonight, and I will CC, I'll send it off in the morning, um, and I'll, you know, I can copy everyone on it, so you can see what is...
We have to get in and post it on, you know, the office.
So then the next, um, I think it's over here, or you have the application, okay?
Thing to read.
By the way, I, I won't be here on the 8th, that's the day of the solar eclipse.
Oh, right.
And I'm going to, up to Quebec.
Oh, cool.
Oh, um, Justin will not be here for the public hearing either.
Is he gonna be at the public hearing?
He's gonna be in Vermont for the solar eclipse.
Bob, you're not gonna be here? We might wanna revisit this.
No, no, it's...
You have, so it's, you know...
I'll be in California.
What?
No, he is, he is, he lives the 8th, I believe.
He's on the vacation.
But...
Well, you know, this time of year.
Is Adam gonna be here?
Yes, Adam's here.
So did you have more to do this week?
Yep, four of you.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, barring none of us get sick.
Oh, everyone is gonna be healthy as a horse.
John, you can be here in Philly.
No, John.
John's going, John's going to Canada. I'm going to Canada.
Are you going, you're going to the eclipse?
Yeah.
Why bother, I got a telescope. There's one, we risked everything we could ask.
I'll, Melissa, I'll send you, I mean, that kind of sit that thing off, but I'll, I'll put something more down.
Okay.
If I think of something.
Sure.
Particularly that affordable housing thing, I'll, I'll put something down.
Okay, that would be fabulous. We appreciate your input.
Yeah. I'm gonna have to live with the results of this, so... Yeah, and, you know, getting it done in spring was a worthwhile goal.
Oh, yeah.
And you, you've, you've done a lot more work than a lot of other towns with, you know, if you'd said, ah, we don't need to do it till the fall, and you waited till the summer to do all this, you'd be in trouble.
Yeah.
So, it's a worthwhile goal, but I entirely agree, if we're not comfortable with what we got, we, we definitely don't wanna be fumbling around the town meeting floor trying to fix it. We, we've all gone to town meetings where other towns, but there's another town boards coming in, and they're all whispering up front, the town council trying to fix it. No. You don't wanna be in that position.
We wanna do what's right.
Yeah.
And we wanna understand what we're doing is right.
We definitely don't wanna run through the whole thing and just go, okay, because one person made an inference about something other towns have suggested. Because, and, because that's what, that's, that's essentially what she told.
Yeah.
Some towns are doing X, Y, and Z just to get it up.
Yeah.
Well, it's not...
Which I think is a valid one, given what she said to us about we were refreshing you because we were doing it right. So, and I could've just been told, but I hope...
And I'm not an attorney, so I, I mean, there are gonna be things I wanna look at, though.
Yeah.
Is that...
But John is.
I know John.
You might, you might be...
But, no, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't read all the
It's all up here.
state documents and their, you know, they, they got like flyers and all kinds of expla- and I haven't bothered doing that, because I didn't have to.
But you're...
But I know enough, I know enough to, to know when we got a problem, but...
All right. Our next item, which I'm taking over for Adam, because he had to meet with the finance committee. Our next item is a location of property, 7 Model Street, Plan 4, Block 51, Lot 1.
So I'm gonna leave the meeting, so they're not part of it.
Sure.
Hey, how's it going, chief?
Thank you very much.
Good night, bye.
Have a good night.
Hi, thanks, John. Type of district, residential. Type of structure, existing chimney, smokestack, antenna. Corelation on structure, 7 Model Street LLC and Massachusetts Limited Liability Company. Phone number, owner's address, 7 Quincy Ave, Quincy, Mass. Email, when did you acquire the property? 18 TOT will be leasing a portion of the property for their antenna and related equipment through a lease agreement. Didn't answer the question. Uh, has an application been filed with the town clerk? No. Has a previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested, the ability and approval to attach the following to the existing smokestack on site. 3 CC1 DPDMP 65R-BU8D, 3 CC1 TPA 65R-BU8D, 3 AIR 6449, 3 AIR 6419, 2 Raycap DC9-48-60-24-8C-EV, 3 Ericsson Radio 8843B... 3 Erickson Radio 8843B2B66A, 3 Erickson Radio 4478B14, 3 Erickson Radio 449B5B12, 3 Erickson 4415B30 on grade steel, WIC and 20 kilowatt diesel generator, on a quote, 13, 2040-13.
That's it?
That's it.
And they're asking for availability or just?
It doesn't really say. I don't, is this for example or reactum?
Just a, it's a ZBA application, so it's just.
I would like to make a motion.
Yes?
And we do not have anything to do with this because this does not.
I agree.
This does not come under what our work is, which is.
These are engineering components. This is not.
I have to agree.
This has nothing to do with the plan board. This should go to the zoning board.
But the planning board is supposed to make recommendations to the zoning board on all proposals for the zoning board.
But this, this board, and this is generally speaking, does not have the background to do this for what they want to do because we only use, we only do developments on this board.
No.
And this has nothing to do with a development. This, this is an existing property with an existing chimney bike. And over the years, they have been before, there's only been two or three times for the same, same different companies. And this board has never, to my knowledge, received an application.
We did one other time, but Bob Power, the building inspector at that time, came and presented. Our concerns at that time were the safety of the smokestack because it is very old. And I agree with you that, I personally feel we can't make a recommendation because for one thing, I don't think we have enough information because there's no one here to tell us what they're doing to protect that existing property.
And they're not required to come before this.
Right. Good point. So we made a motion. Anyone want to second it?
What's the motion that we take, that we take into action?
That we do not act on this because it's not our purview.
No, I cannot accept that. It's within our purview to act on it. We can act on it because we don't have enough information. We can act on it because nobody came to present, but we cannot, not act on it because it's not our purview.
Well, no, the thing is, no one is obligated to come before this board to explain their project, see.
But you can't say that we can't, we vote against it because it's not our job. It is our job.
No, I'm not gonna vote against it. I'm just not gonna vote purview. What was your motion? You know, that we don't.
That they're, that the board does not take any action.
Yeah, why?
Because, that the board would have no recommendation because that this board did not have, doesn't have the background, enough background to make a recommendation.
That, that's fine. But he must say that it's not our purview. It is our purview. I disagree.
I think because we have it and it was given to us, we need to motion to not act and any of those reasons are probably fine.
Yeah, not, not enough information.
But not, but not to, not motion to not say recommend to approve, not recommend to reject, that the planning board is making this motion to take no action because.
Right.
So.
Because we don't have.
Two sides of the same coin. It's just a matter of.
So now in a second.
Procedure.
Your motion. Do you want to amend your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
You withdraw us?
I'll make a motion and, uh, I find, uh, typist over here. Well, read that back to us. Motion?
Your motion?
Yeah.
You haven't made a motion yet.
You've made a motion, you've read a motion back.
Yep.
What was, what'd you read?
That Wayne had made a motion, um, that this board would not make a recommendation because the board did not have the background to make a recommendation.
Not that, not have enough information.
I can make that.
Make that, not enough information to make a decision.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Yes, yes. 4-0.
Do we have anything else, Melissa?
Uh, let me double check the agenda.
Agenda was the streetlights.
Yeah, I just had that as old business as it could be, an ongoing discussion.
Did you send anything to those?
I did not yet. I was sending too many things between the MBTA and the Board Selectmen thing, so I have it on my list to send over to them, but I have not been able to send it to her yet.
Okay, that might be, uh, something we can.
There is, um, three sets of minutes for approval that I had sent out. Um, one was January 9th, we had a meeting. We also had a public hearing on January 9th, and then the meetings from, the minutes from January 23rd's meeting.
All of the family on the jury, say yes.